Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're going to start here.
We'd like to bring the meeting to order, okay? Let me get to my... This is the April 12th meeting of City Council for the... City Council for Planning Commission City Council Chambers. We will have a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Beginning with Jeff Watson.
Here.
Ellen Carrick.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Vicky Good.
Here.
Jerry Penland.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
Charles Schrader.
Here.
John DeVoe.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Lee Brown is absent today.
Okay. Would you kindly join us with "Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen."
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Through the meetings of January 25, 2018. Anybody have any questions, addendums, changes, et cetera? If not, we'll look at your motion.
Move. To accept.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearings. Item A, which I'll read, it's been withdrawn, but I'll read it to the record. Zon-18-001, Quaking Aspen Village rezoning. Consider request to rezone property from multifamily residential suburban and community commercial to mobile home park MHP and community commercial for the purpose of development of a HUD-certified tiny home village on 11 acres and future commercial development on 2 acres with an address of 19569 East US Highway 24 and located in the northeast 1/4 or the southwest 1/4 on Section 30, T12S, Range 68, west of the 6th Park. Meridian City of Woodland Park is requested by NAC-M3XP2LC applicant Gary Edmunds, Quaking Aspen's property owner. Okay, that has been withdrawn, so we will continue on. The other thing that we talked about doing is taking Items B and C and reversing them just for the point that if we need more time, we don't have to rush through that. We can take as much time as we need on B. There'll probably be more time. More input to do it. Do I have anybody that would object or consensus that we take C first and go to B? Anybody got a problem with that?
I would object to the automatic renewal of...
We have voted on that yet.
Okay. Well, I was just going to voice my...
Okay, now what we're trying to do is reverse the order. Okay. Anybody have any objection to it? Okay, with that, we will go to Consider Ordinance Amending Municipal Code 1862050.B for City Council review of temporary use permits.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it will be me. I am Laura Pellegrino. I am the city planner. So today we have before you proposed ordinance in draft form. It's ordinance number 1323, excuse me, Series 2018. And this is the first time we've drafted it. It relates to the council review of TUPs. So when I use the acronym TUP, it stands for Temporary Use Permits. We are here tonight, it is April 12, 2018, for the first Planning Commission hearing on this item. So it is a proposed code amendment to the City of Woodland Park zoning code in the municipal code. That is Title 18 of the municipal code. And essentially, in brief, this code amendment allows for the removal of council as a review of temporary uses that are unchanged from prior years and that have operated without complaint or concern. So for example, we have had Movies Above the Clouds here. I don't know how many of you have gone to Movies Above the Clouds, which is family movies that they project on the screen at the Midland Pavilion. They have been operating since 2014. They have been operating beyond 9 o'clock. They go till about 10:15, and then they shut the sound off at 10:15. The operation of this special event from 9 o'clock to 10:15 requires council approval. They've done council approval through a public hearing process now. This will be the fifth year they do it. And every year it's the same. Every year we've had no concerns or complaints from Movies Above the Clouds for that particular special event. So this proposed change would remove the requirement to go in front of council when there has been no change to the special event that's proposed, like Movies Above the Clouds. So we have a temporary use permit process in the municipal code. It was ordinance 1105 that was approved and adopted and reviewed by the Planning Commission and council way back in December of 2008. Ever since that became code, we've had 261 temporary uses approved within the City of Woodland Park. So special events and vendor permit applications both are quite popular in the city. And the city encourages those types of cultural events. They've been successfully regulated. We've had no problems. But we have noticed that of the 221 special event TUPs, there have been redundancies. And people have commented, both applicants and council members have commented that, why are we seeing this? Why do we need to even review this? So based on some of those types of comments, staff is making this proposal to amend the zoning code. So Municipal Code 18, Title 18, Section 62 deals with temporary uses. This whole section, which was adopted in 2008, codified in 2008, has 10 sections. It deals with the purpose of temporary uses, the permits that are required, the type of temporary uses that we allow, which include vendor permits and special event permits, the application process that an applicant for a special event or a vendor has to submit, the review process and the standards that they have to comply with for these events, the appeal process, the expiration process, the permanent renewal process, revocation of a permit for a temporary use and the non-assignability of temporary use permits. So this whole section again was codified in 2008. We've been implementing it. We've had over 261 events that have occurred since 2008, successfully regulated. So what this particular code amendment is proposing to do is add one simple sentence to one section of this temporary use section of the zoning code. And it is shown here in red. What I'm going to do is read the entire paragraph just for clarification, because this entire paragraph deals with the council review portion of temporary use permits. And then what is in red is the sentence that staff is proposing to add into this code that will simplify the process for council review and for applicants. So Section 1862050B of the City of Woodland Park Municipal Code states, "City Council Review. The City Council shall be the final review authority on temporary use applications where the proposed temporary uses structures will operate between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., or that will endure for longer than six months in a calendar year." So this first sentence specifically states that if a special event occurs after 9 o'clock and before 7 o'clock in the morning, it has to go to council for review. Staff's not proposing to change that. It also says that council has to review any special event that occurs for longer than six months. All other temporary use permits are administratively reviewed. So it doesn't go in front of council, unless staff has the discretion to send it to council if there are highly impacted uses or issues related to this special event. But for sure, the code states that anything after 9 o'clock related to a special event or longer than six months has to go for council review. Staff is proposing to add the sentence that's in red, and it states, "If City Council has issued a temporary use permit in the past, then subsequent permit renewals may be administratively approved if all temporary use characteristics are substantially unchanged from the original application and no complaints or issues have ever been received by the city." So when an applicant, like Movies Above the Clouds, comes in for their very first temporary use permit application, they would have to go in front of council. When they come in for their second temporary use permit application, if we've not had any concerns or complaints, it would simply be administratively reviewed. Staff would have the ability to still assess impacts with it. And if... And we would still have the discretion if we believe that there are very impactful issues involved with this activity, we could still send it to council. But this allows us the discretion to say there have been no changes to the event. It's occurred in the past without concern or complaint. It can occur in the future without having to go to council. The benefit of not having to go to council is, first of all, it's essentially a waste of council's time. It's a public hearing in front of council. We have to put up posters on the site at least 10 days in advance of the council hearing. We have to send out adjacent property owner notices to everybody within 150 feet of the proposed site. And it adds time to the processing of a temporary use permit application, which staff believes is not necessary. So I'm going to read the rest of this paragraph that exists currently in the code, and it deals with this notification process. "So when council review is necessary, the following notice procedure shall be utilized. The notice of a public hearing shall be mailed to all adjacent property owners of every lot or parcel adjacent to the site of the proposed temporary use at least 10 days prior to the council... City Council meeting. The property to be used for the temporary use shall be posted..." That should say "posted", "with a notice for no less than 10 days prior to the council meeting. The notices to be mailed and posted shall state that the application is for a temporary use permit, that an application for a temporary use permit has been applied for, shall identify the proposed temporary use, and shall state the City Council meeting date." So again, the proposal before us today is an ordinance to simply add the sentence that's in red that gives a little bit more discretion for events that have occurred in the past without any concern or complaint. So the proposed changes, staff believes, generally reduces regulation and processing times, streamlines the TUP review process. It removes unnecessary barriers to business and economic development. It ensures understandable, fair, and enforceable regulations in the city. And it still allows for a staff impact assessment on the proposed temporary use permit. Again, the benefits and advantages to this change include things like reducing redundancy, frees council agenda, simplifies, clarifies regulation. It's an easier process for staff and applicants, and it provides greater flexibility. If this type of flexibility had been included in the original proposal that was adopted in 2008, there would have been nine less public hearings in front of City Council in the years since we've implemented TUP regulations. That just gives you an idea of the impact. So tonight, this ordinance is here before the Planning Commission for public hearing and for discussion and consideration. If it... If the recommendation is to proceed, then the first reading will be in front of City Council for this ordinance on May 3, and second reading and public hearing is scheduled for May 17. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I've got a question. For example, if I sell my building, and right next door is where they do the movies, and the new owners do a lot of events, if they are not notified in writing that, you know, this movie is going to be happening every Friday night, it might cause a lot of conflict. I think it is the responsibility of the city to notify property owners that certain things are going to be happening for permitted use. It should be notified first that owns the property. Because if I have an event going on for my personal business, might conflict with another or a change of ownership where they're not familiar with how Woodland Park does things. I think it gives... It's just not work... It wouldn't work. Also too, I feel... I believe that I do not want to have the city have the authority to make all the, you know, that many decisions, especially when you're talking people's business, their livelihood. I think it should have to go through City Council for review. Because this city is growing so fast. Things are changing so fast that just because somebody is able to have a hamburger stand here, I open up a Red Robin's, and suddenly the guy in front of me with their little vending license is sitting right in my front doorstep, I don't think we're being very proactive to protect businesses that are investing a lot of money and paying a lot of property tax.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. I appreciate those comments. Just keep in mind that this regulation change focuses simply on the time, 9 o'clock. So if an applicant has gone through this process and gone in front of council already, and it's exactly the same application year after year, and it relates to the time or any reason, like the six months, then it wouldn't have to go in front of council. So it wouldn't relate, for instance, to the example that you suggested about the vendor? Typically vendors are gone before 9 o'clock at night.
That's typical, but you don't know what other vendors will be coming in or what they will be renewing. You cannot make assumptions. And rubber stamping things is not good for Woodland Park.
Okay. This is not a process to rubber stamp, but it is a process to streamline and to reduce regulations, which does make it a better process for everyone concerned.
Next, anybody else?
Have you ever revoked? Anybody who tried a second or third request to hold it?
Never.
Other questions? Anybody else? Open public comment. Anybody from the audience sign up to sign, or even if we missed you, if you want to talk about it? There's pardon. Pardon? Two. What? Okay, you're on B. Jay? About this. About this ordinance, okay?
Please, please come to the podium.
We've got to have your name and address on record and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, so state your name and address, and I'll make sure the mic is on.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, you're on.
Yes, my name is Jay Moore. I live at 225 Morning Sun Drive in Woodland Park.
And my question is, is just off the cuff, who brought this proposal for the Planning Commission?
Staff.
Okay, she brought that? She was the one who brought it?
No individual brought it, no. There's no applicant.
Okay, so was somebody on staff?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Sure. Name, address, serial number?
Keith Aaron, 751 Majestic Parkway in the red. One of the things he wrote is, "No complaints or issues have ever been filed into the city." Issue is just a... It could be anything. Anybody could object to anything. Does that automatically trigger it to go to City Council?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Now we'll close the public hearing. Public comment. Any questions? Anybody else want to have some input among ourselves about it? Yes, sir.
There's a point of clarification then. So a applicant comes in, it's during normal daytime hours for two months, we have recurring event. There would be no public notification in that case?
So if he's coming in... If he's coming in for a special event, and it's just a regular special event? Is that what you're thinking? It's not past 9 o'clock?
Yeah, it's within, say, 10 to 4.
Right. There is no...
He's going to do it for...
There's no need. It's administrative review process. There's no public notice. We do a referral.
Well, no, if it's a new applicant, there's still no notification to the public.
It's an administrative review process, and we do an internal referral to some agencies, like the Fire Department, Public Works Department, all of those internal departments. But we don't do public notice. It's not a public process.
Thank you.
And may I just add to that?
Maybe. No, go ahead.
Let me go back to the right slide. So we had 261 TUPs that have gone through the process since 2008. Of those 221 special event TUPs, only, I think it was 25 that we counted, had to go in front of council. So very few of them invoke the 9 o'clock or the six month. The six month. So let me just get that number. 24 had to go in front of council.
And how did you come up with those non-of-hours that were spent by City Council since 2008?
No, that's not City Council hours. Those are... An applicant comes in and has a special event, like Movies Above the Clouds, after 9 o'clock. So we had 24 of those applicants, all related to operating their special event beyond 9 o'clock, of which four of those was Movies Above the Clouds. So it's not City Council hours. It's the operation of the special event beyond 9 o'clock. And I'm just counting the number of applicants that had to go in front of council. Was that your question?
I guess I must have just misunderstood. I thought you were saying that City Council hours, this is what they utilize.
No.
Let me ask a question of clarification. This is for renewals, not first time?
That's right, renewals. First time, if they're beyond...
First time, this has got to go to council.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to make sure. I thought that's where you were asking. This is only for renewals that haven't changed.
Yes.
It is. I know that the council a number of months ago gave the charge to the staff to try to figure out a way to cut costs back, a way to reduce it and still not change the scope of what we were trying to do. And it sounds like that's... This is what one of the projects is. Now...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If a road closure is in question, will the owners be notified?
No, road closures, again, it's only the hours that trigger council review or more than six months.
So if there was a street dance somewhere in town, and I'm not notified, and my whole road's closed, and it was after 9 o'clock, too bad, so sad that it was something that was renewed, and they decided to hold it every single day for six months?
A street dance that goes after 9 o'clock will receive a notification the first time.
But every time thereafter, they can do it whenever they want?
As long as there weren't any problems. And typically, Vicky, what we ask the applicant to do is to go and knock on doors to make sure that people are aware that that event is going to go on, just like they did for the new event that we had, the St. Patrick's Day Parade here recently. Those applicants went around and notified folks. These are special events that are very important to our community.
So the next one that comes up, though, they won't be required to notify me that they are closing the street in front of my store?
We can still ask, as a courtesy, that the applicant... And this is what we always do, that the applicant notify adjacent businesses and properties of their event. It just wouldn't require council review. We are very sensitive to impacts to the adjoining property owners whenever an event occurs.
But it's not a requirement you ask them to do.
We ask them now. It's not a requirement even now. All we're talking about here is council review.
I think you have a valid point. And what I'm saying by that is there needs to be some kind of a vehicle that if we're closing roads... I'm not talking about anything else. If we're going to shut down a road for a while, that somehow a sign get posted or somebody get notified that this road's going to be closed, because that impacts people, everybody going home. If it's more than one day or something in that effect. Just a simple sign put out there to notify that, that that's going to take place. I'd like to see that. I would recommend...
We do... Oftentimes, what you'll see is if Highway 24 is impacted, for instance, we'll put up the digital sign that'll say, barriers, road closures, detours, watch out, parade, you know, homecoming parade.
But if it's not 24 and affects somebody's street where they park in their residence, it's meaningless, that would be a logical thing for us to do. That's all.
And we do do that with every event. The coordinators go around, just like the farmer's market. When they close the roads, they notify all those adjoining property owners.
So that still is a requirement?
It's a condition that we place on the applicant.
And even if you renew it and the council doesn't, that still...
It's still a condition.
Hasn't gone away?
Right.
And if somebody came in first time and had gone through the whole council review process and they had a special event that was beyond 9 o'clock, and there was a road closure, all of these things, and it ended up being a problem for business owners or other property owners, that would go on the record. There would be complaints. There would be issues. And presumably, the city staff would not advance the approval of a repetitive event without bringing it before the council.
Absolutely correct. And as a matter of fact...
That's what this is saying.
Yes.
You still, if you're going to exceed the time period that's permitted and you need council approval, that we would not approve the event again in the future administratively if there were any concerns or issues or complaints about what happened, that that event was a risk.
That's correct.
Now, remember, all we are is recommending this to council. You're going to have a first reading and a public hearing to be able to go and ask council about this. We're not passing anything that's going to take place without council going through this and have another opportunity to get up and talk about it before it really becomes an ordinance. Everybody understand that? Any other questions? We need a motion and a second if appropriate.
I'll move that we approve the ordinance number 1323. Is that...
Yes. 1323, yes.
Pardon me?
Yes, 1323.
Series 2018, amending the council review of temporary use permits.
Second.
Was that Jeff? Were you second?
Yep.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
All right, starting with Ellen Carrick.
Approved, yes.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Vicky Good.
No.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
And Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to ordinance... Consider ordinance amending B. I'll read that. Consider ordinance amending Municipal Code 1809090F for storage and rental recreation and vehicles and trailers, 180909V for mini storage warehouses, and 1806420 for recreation vehicle park definition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Laura Pellegrino. I am a city planner, and this is a proposed text amendment to the municipal code of the City of Woodland Park relating to RV storage and rental. It is a change to primarily the use table. Tonight is the April 12, 2018 Planning Commission public hearing on this item, and it is your first go at this proposed code amendment. So this proposed code amendment does allow for the storage or rental of cars, trailers, RVs, light trucks, motorcycles, OHVs, ATVs, snowmobiles, and boats with outside screening and a provision for the exclusion of junk or damaged goods. So what we did primarily with this code amendment is look at our use table, which is Municipal Code Section 1809090. It is our table of uses that are listed and allowed either conditionally, administratively, as a permitted use, or as a permitted conditional use. So this table of uses lists all of the possible uses. It's not listing all of the possible uses, but it has an entire list of possible uses that are permitted within the City of Woodland Park. So it says things like mobile homes are permitted here, or it'll say things like retail businesses are permitted in this zone district, for instance. So I'm sure many of you commissioners have read our table of uses in great detail. Anyway, what we are looking at is a section F of this table. And F is the automotive, trailers, RVs, and boats, sales, service, and rental section. So it deals with activities related to those types of uses. And right now, the way the code is written, it does not allow for the storage of RVs, for instance. And this ordinance is an attempt to fill that gap because the planning department continues to get inquiries about storing RVs from private property owners and from commercial businesses and potential developers with respect to where can we store our RV or where can we store our boat? Okay? So because we continue to get these inquiries from various different people and/or businesses, we've made this attempt to amend our zoning regulation. So this section of the table of uses deals with RV storage and rental uses, for instance. So you can see F2, so for everything that's in red is what we're proposing as an addition. So just for clarification, the category called automotive, RV trailer, RV travel trailers and boats, sales, service, and rental is amended by clarifying that RV travel trailers is actually what we mean by recreational vehicles. Trailers are things like what we consider to be like U-Haul storage trailers or just trailers that attach to a car or a vehicle. And this section not only is now gonna, it dealt with sales, service, and rental, now it's gonna also deal with the storage of these types of activities. Okay, so that first row is just really a classification row, and we've just clarified it with this red-lined addition. Row number two, of course, is a row number one, but I'm only showing you the sections of the table that are being amended here tonight. Oh, and we did hand out, everyone should have a copy of the entire section in its entirety, even the sections that aren't changing. So if this seems confusing because we jumped to number two, you have in front of you the entire list of all of the 10 rows within the F classification. So anyway, going to row number two. Row number two, everything that's in black is already existing. So row number two dealt with the sale of new or used automobiles, recreation vehicles, light trucks, motorcycles, snowmobiles, and boats, including enclosed accessory repair facilities. So that was already, you can see as you go down the row, a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial zone, a conditional use, that's what the C stands for, in the community commercial, a permitted use in the service commercial, a conditional use in the central business district. We are adding it as a permitted use in the light industrial heavy service commercial zone, and it's already permitted conditionally in the PUD zone. So the change here is first of all that we clarified the sale, and just remember, this is focused on the sale of new or used automobiles, trailers. So we clarified that it relates to trailers, also ATVs and OHVs, and we added a section that it doesn't include outside storage of damaged or junk goods of any kind. So it's not, they may be used vehicles or used boats, but these are not damp, they're not junk vehicles. Yeah. And so the difference here is that we added this type of sale and clarified it and also allowed it in the light industrials of the district. And then what we did to address, oops, to address the storage issue, because again, row two did not deal with storage, it just dealt with sales. So activities related to storage or rental of all of the same types of items, automobiles, trailers, RVs, light trucks, motorcycles, OTVs, ATVs, snowmobiles, and boats, exactly the same items that we're allowing for the sale of. Now we're going to allow for and provide for the storage and rental of these items, provided all outside uses shall be screened from public view by an approved fence or other approved buffering. This is identical language to other screening and buffering requirements we have in other zones, other rows of this use table. And we're also allowing outside uses to exclude the storage of rental or damaged junk goods and vehicles. What we did was we limited the storage and rental of these types of vehicles to a permitted use in the service commercial zone district and a permitted use in the light industrials zone district. So there are only two zone districts within the City of Woodland Park within which we would allow for the storage and rental of these types of units. And it would be also allowed, permitted conditionally as part of a PUD process, which is a very involved process. So that's the primary change we're making in this ordinance right here. Then the other change, which is peripheral but related, we have a section. It's Section Classification V, which deals with wholesale trade, distribution, warehousing, and storage activities. This classification allows for what we're commonly, what we know as mini-storage warehouses, those types of personal property storage facilities. This allows for, row number three allows for mini-storage warehouses for the storage of personal property. An RV is considered personal property. So it's feasible that an RV could be stored within a mini-warehouse. Now, a condition for a mini-warehouse is it has to be an enclosed building. So it would have to be enclosed, the RV would have to be enclosed. However, we have a provision here, condition number A, that says no single storage compartment shall have a floor area exceeding 300 square feet. Well, that wouldn't allow for the storage of RVs. And so staff is proposing to take that out and doesn't actually understand why it was ever put in there and why it's even necessary to have a limit on mini-warehouse storage facilities in terms of the capacity for these facilities. So the proposal is to remove that limitation of 300 square feet, and we added permitted conditionally under PUD because that was somehow omitted, or it was an oversight, or it was a typo in the original. All of these uses in our use table are permitted conditionally as part of a PUD process. So we didn't change the zone districts within which mini-warehouses go. We just took out that limitation of 300 square feet. Then the last change this ordinance is proposing is to the definition of a recreational vehicle park. What we did was it was just easier to just delete it, and we wanted to clarify what constitutes an RV park. So an RV park means any land used for the unenclosed parking. Doesn't talk about occupancy or anything, it's just parking of two or more RVs, camping trailers, or campers, whether occupied or not. So what we needed to do, and that's essentially what this up here said in many more words and in much more confusing ways. What we also did was we needed to exclude the section that we just added, which deals with storage, because obviously, we're gonna store more than two RVs on a site, but we don't wanna call it an RV park because there's no way that we're gonna allow occupancy in an RV storage facility. So it's not an RV park. So that's what that last clause says. It excludes Section 1809090F11, which is the one that we just added to the use table. So it makes it clear, I hope, that an RV storage facility, for instance, is not an RV park. Or campground. And we have a different definition for campground, too. So that's, those are the changes that are being proposed. Everything that was in red or everything that was struck out. So generally, these proposed changes allow for the storage and rental facilities for cars, RVs, trailers, light trucks, motorcycles, OHVs, ATVs, snowmobiles, and boats in the service commercial and heavy service commercial light industrial zone districts only. It would require outside storage and rental to be screened, and it wouldn't allow for junk vehicles within this site. It would allow them as a permitted use, which still requires site plan review by staff. So it is still an administrative review process through which we can assess impacts related to any of these proposed uses. So I just wanted to give you a general idea of what type of uses and activities are allowed in the heavy service commercial light industrial zone district, for instance. So I went down the use table under that column and picked out every use that allows for outside storage. Now, the heavy service commercial light industrial zone in the city is our highest impact zone, which means it has some of the most controversial uses and activities that occur in the city. So for instance, it would allow for things like taxi stands, assuming we had taxis in the city. Dispatching stations. It would allow for things like farm, ranch, lawn, garden supply stores and outlets. It would allow for heavy repair services like sheet metal, electrical plumbing, carpentry, and sign painting. Remember, these are all allowed as outdoor uses with simply screening, same provision we have for the RV storage. It would allow for public, private, commercial off-street parking lot. It would allow for heavy equipment and vehicle sales for things like trucks, farm equipment, backhoes, loaders, compactors, litters, and graders. It would allow for light manufacturing, light industrial activities. It would allow for contractor and construction services. It would allow for truck-trailer rental as a principal use with some conditions. So again, these would all be allowed, these are all allowed right now as a permitted use with simply an administrative site plan review process, much like we were proposing for the RV storage and rental facilities. So that's heavy service commercial light industrial. This map on the left of this slide shows you that there are only 13 lots in the city that have this current zoning designation. You can see them in red here at the north ends by the golf course, and this one lot down here at the south end, the very south end of the city. So there are not a lot of industrial lots in the city, but these are the lots where it is feasible and compatible to put something like an RV storage facility. SC is our service commercial zone district. This map shows you that there are only seven lots in the city with this zone district designation, and you can see where they are here. Again, by the golf course roughly, right here on Highway 67, and right here north of Walmart, south of Safeway. So again, the service commercial zone district, I went through the entire column and looked at all the types of uses that it allows for. And it allows for the outside storage of these permitted uses. And I'll just go through this list real quick to give you an idea of the types of uses and activities that are allowed in these little purple lots. So for instance, it allows for a greenhouse or a plant nursery. It would allow for outside storage of those types of uses. It allows for golf course, driving range, allows for a gas station. It allows for the sale of new or used cars, RVs. It allows for the sale of RVs, so you could have an RV lot out there. For light trucks, motorcycles, snowmobiles, boat, auto rental, truck-trailer rental, car wash, motels, lodges, B&amp;Bs. It allows for a private, public, commercial parking lot. It even allows for the rental of light equipment for yard work or gardening, building repairs, cement work, painting. It allows for a supermarket, a taxi stand, dispatching station. So again, service commercial and the heavy service commercial light industrial are the two most impacted uses in the city, or zone districts in the city that allow for the most impacted uses, and that's where we're proposing to put these. In total, we're talking about 20 lots in the city that would allow for RV storage or RV rental. So what are the benefits of this code amendment to the municipal code? Well, it does respond to a community need. Staff can verify that we continue to get questions from individuals who wanna store their multiple RVs or their boats or their trailers, and they don't have the space on their site or on their lot. We get calls from businesses who wanna open a business, and developers who wanna develop land to allow for this type of activity. It does fill a gap. This type of use currently is not permitted in our list of uses. And so when a use is not listed, it is not permitted. We would still allow for, like any permitted use on our use table, an administrative review process for all permitted uses. That would happen for an RV storage or rental lot. We do assess impacts, and we would require screening as part of that site plan review process. And we would take a look at their screening to see if it would adequately protect the public view. Again, the benefit of this is that we are limiting it to only two zone districts in the city, the service commercial and the heavy service commercial light industrial zone districts, approximately 20 lots in the city. And they are the city's highest impact lots, zones. So if this proceeds beyond the planning commission tonight, we would be looking at first reading in front of city council on May 3, and May 17 for the second reading and public hearing in front of city council. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Questions? Staff?
I have one. On Section 18.06.420, I don't understand why, whether occupied or not was addressed there as far as why, if it, we currently don't have any RV parks or any type of recreational vehicle parks, why now should that be addressed, whether occupied or not? Can that language be scratched so we don't have people living there?
Well, you see, the original definition did deal with occupancy. It said camping trailers, for instance, on any zoning lot on which unoccupied recreational vehicles are used or parked outside. So it dealt with occupancy. And so I was just mirroring that. And the occupancy, it doesn't, what we mean to say here is it doesn't matter. If you park two RVs on your lot, Commissioner Good, that constitutes an RV park, and it's not allowed, because an RV park has to go through a conditional use process in front of the planning commission with a full site plan review and public hearings. So that's, it's important to maintain that occupancy, whether occupied or not, it doesn't matter. If you're parking more than one RV on your lot and it's not enclosed, because that deals with enclosure as well, then it's called an RV park and it's not allowed.
Can I ask a question? Okay. The guy has a truck camper outside of his house. He's got a little pull, he's got a little camper behind it. Does his house have to qualify as an RV park?
Well, the definition relates to RVs, camping trailers, or campers. So we're talking about a camping trailer that you attach to your car that you'd sleep in.
Sure. So if he has two small campers on his, at his home, he's got three or four acres, he's gonna have to apply to the city, become an RV park?
Yes.
You gotta be kidding me.
That's the way it's currently written, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's the way it's, but if he encloses his two trailers, then it's, we don't care. He's enclosed them, he's got them in a garage, we don't see that. That's the way it's currently written.
But the new one says the same thing.
The new one says the same thing, and we mirrored that, yes.
I just kinda curious.
That allows us to enforce many RVs on a single lot.
Is motorhome qualified?
Yes.
So if he had a motorhome and a little pull behind trailer, and he's living in a piece, in a lot in our town, he's gotta apply to be an RV park?
He does, or we would suggest that he enclose one or the other.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
We've never had that issue, may I say that?
Okay, you may.
But that is how the-
I'm just talking about what I see around this town. There's a lot of, we're gonna have a heck of a lot of RV parks.
I know. We only ask- You won't get a zoning for an RV park in a single-family subdivision.
So they'll have to move one of their two units?
Exactly.
Or enclose.
Or enclose one of them.
Really?
Yes. That's how it's written right now, Mr. Chairman.
This is to control the amount of recreation vehicles, trailers, campers in a single-family district.
Yes. Because what we find is that many people, not many, some people park three or four RVs on their lot, and then before you know it, people are living in those RVs and it becomes a little bit of a nightmare. So this is our way to control how many you can park on your lot, unenclosed. They could have a big garage as an accessory building and park for RVs in there if they want to.
You don't see this as an unintended consequence for a lot of people in our community?
No. It's current, it's been existing-
This is how we enforce it now.
It has not had any consequences to date.
But the language on the first one says, "on which unoccupied recreational vehicles." And down here, you're saying whether occupied or not. You are basically saying at that point, you've turned it into it's okay to be occupied.
Yeah, we don't want it to be occupied. Unoccupied or parked.
Uh huh. Unoccupied.
I think whether occupied or not, this is a clarification. It doesn't matter whether it's occupied or not. I could take, you could take that down.
You could take it out.
I think that needs to be scratched out of there because you're encouraging- I think that needs to be scratched out of there because you're encouraging RV parks from popping up everywhere or, you know, tag along.
Because suddenly fifth wheels are everywhere and everybody's living in them. We don't want to imply that you can live in your RV at your home. That is not implying.
That's what we want to do, that language.
I'd agree with you on this one. It almost invites it. The prior version is, if you hear the satisfaction stamp, it's silent on it, but it doesn't invite the bite.
Yeah.
Absolutely understand what you're saying. I understand what staff is saying, that it's intended to clarify the cross-out of the absence of occupied in the current subsection, sort of doesn't entertain the possibility. This sort of says, oh, for the quick reader, and this is a bit blurtily like events, which these have to be, for the quick reader it says, well, maybe I can occupy without, it's not logical, but I understand what you're saying.
Staff does not object to removing that clause, the occupied. So, if it comes to a motion, add that in the motion.
Well, a point of discussion here, too, is that in the original phrasing, if you had three mobile homes or RV vehicles on your property and you were living in them, since they're not, no longer unoccupied, you wouldn't qualify as a recreational vehicle park. So, one solution to have three RVs on your property is to move into them. And so, we're trying to avoid that.
That's why I was.
And so, by, and I was confused by this as well, the proposed wording. So, it says whether they're on your property, whether you're living in them or whether you're not, it's still a recreational vehicle park. It doesn't say you're allowed to. So, if you go through the zoning change process and change your property to be an RV park compatible zoning, which residential property, I understand, is not, then you can, then you can live in them or you can just park them there. But you'd have to go through that process, whether you're living in the units or not. So, again, our initial reading, I was confused, but I think that by having whether occupied or not clarifies, it doesn't matter if you're living in it or not, you can't have it on your property unless you rezone for a recreational vehicle park compatible zoning, which probably is not going to go through in a residential property.
Right. That was my attempt. I understand it's confusing, the original definition is confusing. However, I'm comfortable with the way it's written for the unenclosed parking, just parking, just parking RVs or trailers. We don't have to deal with occupancy. I think that's fine. So, again, I'm still comfortable to exclude that clause in the motion.
I interrupted you from the one question you had. Do you have another one? Because I've kind of watched too.
I just have one, you know, to record a clarification. This, these are the changes that they need eventually adopted, no way should allow for recreational RVs. This is strictly for sale or storage.
Storage or rental.
Storage in certain areas that you outlined, and that would require very strict adherence to shading, fencing.
It would require landscaping regulations, that the site plan review process would go through, it would require a site plan somewhere that would be reviewed?
Because my question, without picking on any current land uses, we live right on the border of Teletown in El Paso County, and on Highway 24, before you hit the Teletown line, there's like a bunch of disasters of RV storage areas and so forth with all due respect to the property owners in El Paso County. They're not a legal park, and that is certainly the last thing, I think, anybody can see whether their property is adjacent to it or not within our legislation.
Right. And so, our requirement within the actual row of this use table is that all outside uses be screened from public view, and that is the language that we use for other screening in other activities and uses. When we get our site plan review, screening could even include a cover. It could be open on a short side, but we may require, depending on where it's located, we could require screening to be a cover. Or it could be fenced, or it could be burned, or it could be landscaped, and that would all be as part of the site plan and administrative review process.
One question that I have concerning the rental, I think that needs to be defined as short-term rental, 10 days or less, because otherwise you're creating, I pull in an RV, I set it there, and now I'm charging rent for the next 10 years at $500 a month.
You can't live in it there. That's if you rent something to take somewhere.
I think, these are rentals off the property.
Yes.
I think it should say, "short-term".
Well, they may rent a unit for a month and then go to Alaska.
Right.
You don't mean to stop that. You mean to stop living on that spot.
Correct, or have something for a long-term use. We need to make sure that that is defined and clarified.
You can't live there at all. That's our point.
There's no occupancy. It's only storage and rental. The activities that will be allowed will only be storage and rental.
This is not a campground.
Off-premise, off-premise realm. Might add the word off-premise realm.
Off-premise use.
Laura, I also need, excuse me, clarification on something. Your cover page here shows a U-Haul rental.
That's the biggest one in the country.
And then, if I look further into the document, if there were a U-Haul rental office or something, where does the screening and so forth take place for a U-Haul rental? Are they going to park their, can they park their trucks as illustrated in this picture? Where does the screening come in? I'm confused on that.
So, the provision, the road that we're adding allows for storage and rental of trailers, for instance, which could be trucks with a U-Haul or just the trailers that they rent off. And it would still allow for all outside uses to be screened, so it would happen as part of the site plan review process. Just an RV storage lot would have to go through a site plan review, and we would look at screening for the proposed use at that time, whether it's trailers, boats, U-Hauls, RVs, all part of that site-specific development that's submitted and reviewed as part of the site plan review.
So, would there be a row of U-Hauls like in this picture at a U-Haul rental facility that are not screened, is what I'm asking?
No, I think staff would require some screening of some sort, and in our case here, we say, "outside use shall be screened from public view by approved fence or other approved block". So, there's discretion, there's ability to do fencing, there's the ability to screen from public view, whatever that is.
So, if a gas station wanted to do U-Haul as well, they would have to then screen?
So, you can't see the station?
So, you can't.
No, we have, we have a provision right now in our zoning code that allows for truck and trailer rental as an accessory use to a service station. It's allowed right now as app seven, and it's conditioned that the service station on the lot having a minimum area of 20,000 square feet, that the accessory use shall not occupy more than 10% of the lot, that not more than 10 rental units shall be permitted outdoors on any lot at any time, and no rental unit shall be parked within 25 feet of any public driveway. It doesn't even require screening.
So, that's a different use.
That's a different.
A different use?
Different category.
It's a U-Haul accessory to a gas station, which was your example.
Yeah.
So, that's already permitted, and it's already conditioned, and I don't know how long it's been in here, and it's allowed conditionally in the CC and the CBD zone districts, and it's permitted in the SC zone district. And we're not touching that use or that activity in any way.
Is this the time that we would consider if it's having recre, if we're having recreational vehicle rentals, that we would think of sewer, sewage disposal?
It is certainly part of a development application that would come in. It would be entirely up to the developer or the builder or the owner if they want to put a dump station there, and it would be reviewed as part of the site plan review process by all of our agencies. There's a question as to whether or not our services could sustain a dump station, but it would get reviewed and be approved or denied as part of the site plan review process.
I would, like, what is the definition of trailer?
I don't think we have an actual definition.
Well, you've crossed out the word RV travel and just left trailers, and you've put in red just the word trailers, not RV trailers.
Right.
Is it a trailer house that's used in Dakotas? That means a mobile.
Yeah.
What's a trailer?
It's common sense, like a horse trailer or a trailer that you're using to haul.
Or a house trailer.
Like a. That would be.
That'd be an RV.
That would be a motorhome.
House trailer or motorhome is no. No, not a motorhome, no.
That's the definition, RV travel trailer is an RV.
Motorhome is not a trailer. Okay, but this, my copies got scratched out, RV travel.
Right.
I wonder why.
I think that's just an old way to define an RV, and so what I do is I distinguish between a recreational vehicle and a trailer, because we also want to consider trailers.
What's a trailer?
A trailer is something that you attach to the car but is not an RV, not a camper.
So, we could have semis and trailers, sir.
So, a four-by-eight trailer would fall under this, so you could not have two four-by-eight trailers sitting on your property without screening?
Without being called an RV park.
Without being called an RV park.
Well, actually, no, let me go back to the RV definition. So, this is just the, John, Mr. Commissioner, this, this row here is just the classification, the title of the classification, so it doesn't even deal with uses. And you're right, we need to make sure that we have our definitions correct.
The reason I say that is that two halves of a 24-by-70 mobile home are two halves that are called trailers, and we don't want to have in this thing a mobile, yeah, they are. Yeah, they are. That's a trailer, and the defin, we just haven't defined.
No.
It's a mobile home.
A mobile home has to have certification.
That's right.
And that does not fall in this category.
So, this does not include, this, mobile homes are not allowed.
This is not a mobile.
No, we need to say that.
No.
This is automotive use.
A mobile home in North Dakota is a house trailer.
This is automotive uses. It's not a home use.
All right.
But stay, stay with the classification.
And when we don't have a definition, we don't have a specific definition for what is a trailer. It is the common sense application of what's a trailer.
We have not got to the public comment period yet, and I'm sure we'll have a few that would like to. No, it's okay. What I'm saying is, I would propose that we have a work session on this to the public and get, get these definitions, exactly what we mean by this, exactly what they. I think before we go any further, because there's, some of this stuff needs to be rewritten for clarification, and there's nothing wrong with doing that, but I don't think we can do that here tonight. That means you guys got to come back, okay?
John?
If you don't mind doing that, okay?
I think it's important that we do hear, though, what the public is thinking about.
Yes.
And then take it to further discussion.
Correct. Only got one person written, but there might be a few that might come up to talk. But what I'm saying is that we need, we need to find that because, because unintended consequences take place. I live here. I don't want to see some of the things we've talked about here either. Okay, there's none of us in that. I don't want some of my neighbors that have a motorhome and a little pop-up trailer behind it to have to put one someplace else. They can't store it in their yard, and they've got an acre in the city, and we haven't defined those things here, okay? And I'd like to see us do that, and if you think we're a rubber stamp, please tell people we're not because we're tired of it, because we want to get, get to this, get to the bottom of it and do it right so everybody can understand. I'm not going to please all of you, but if we can please all but one, we're getting, making progress, but, so, what I would like to do, if we could, is let's go to public comment, and we can come back and talk about it after that, if you don't mind. And the first one, there's actually got a guy signed up, there's a guy who wants to talk on B. Mr. Mike. You're saying you would switch.
Is that working?
There you go.
Name is Mike Mackay at 225 Morning Star Court. Okay, so, in your picture, I'm, I'm very intrigued by this picture in the upper right.
This one here?
Yes. So, clearly, that's not a real picture. I've never seen an RV storage lot like that. Is anybody else? Okay, I'm curious, where did you get that picture?
From Leggitt's.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, you happen to have a picture of Leggitt's, the one down the street that he mentioned. Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's what, obviously, we have as a reference, and I think that's part of our concern, is what will this look like in the future? Part of the problem with RV parks, I mean, with RV storage lots, boat storage lots, is people want to cover their property to prevent the sun, especially at 8,500 feet, the sun damage to the composite roofs to a boat. I own both a camper and a boat, and so I understand, you know, the need to store them and protect them, and so people put tarps over them. And over the years, you may have seen those tarps in the sun degrade, and they rip, and then they're flopping around, and then as you drive by Leggitt's, these things are waving at you, okay? And so, that's, that's kind of, you know, where these things can, can go to. So, the next point I want to make is about, you mentioned filling a gap and filling a need. I think that's more of an opinion than it is a fact, whether we need this in Woodland Park. You know, there are many things that the current municipal code may not address specifically in order for a business to open. Do we, do we specifically address junkyards, salvage yards for automobiles?
No.
If I wanted to open one of those, you know, I could ask, you know, the city to add that to the code, right? Marijuana farm, you know, you kind of see where I'm going with it. Truck stop, you know. So, I think it's a matter of perspective on what you think the need is to be filled in, in the public. In my neighborhood, the storage of RVs is not allowed by covenant, so mine are in a detached garage. My neighbors have put theirs down at Leggitt's. My other neighbor built a fence, right? So, I think there's some ways to handle this while bringing this into the city. In specific, I believe, we're talking in particular about a proposed development on the SC property, which is on the west side of 24 between Morning Sun and Aspen Garden. The Saddle Club, for instance, is SC zone, and I believe the proposal is to make this as a permitted use of SC zone land. So, you mentioned screening. That, that site is several feet below Highway 24, many, many feet below Highway 24. So, fence isn't going to do the trick. As a matter of fact, that picture that you showed of the aerial of that RV park is pretty close to what you would see if you were sitting at the light at Aspen Garden going eastbound. close to what you would see if you were sitting at the light at Aspen Garden going eastbound. There's not a fence you could build to block that lot from public view. So I think you have to, and if you drive around Carls Springs, you might come across several of these lots with a six or an eight foot, maybe even a 10 foot high fence, which is inadequate to block the view. And my last point is the change of conditional to permitted for some of your categories I really wouldn't, I mean, most of the people in this room attended a public hearing, not very recently, based on public notice. Okay, so my understanding is changing this use to P eliminates the need for a public notice and a public hearing?
May I respond?
Sure.
So a P for storage. P for storage or rental of automobiles is what we're proposing. It's, so P stands for a permitted use and it's a site plan review process. It's an administrative review. So it's not a public hearing, but we do have a notification process where everybody within 150 feet is sent a, a letter notifying them of an application in review.
But there's no hearing, there's no.
There's no public hearing.
There's no city council review necessarily. It's an administrative review. Okay? So, you know, I guess, the, the point is, is I'm really trying to make is, in, in, you know, I'm trying to make sure that we don't take the people's voice away. Okay? You can't just wake up one day and say, you know, how's that, how's that RV storage lot going in across the road, you know? And it turns out that, well, we signed that away by changing a couple of letters on a table that, I'm an engineer, it took me a while to figure this thing out and that took a couple of phone calls, okay? The average citizen doesn't understand this. Okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that the planning commission has the ability to change it. If they don't, and this could be part of the work session, if they don't, it should be a permitted use.
For clarification, what's the red P mean?
Permitted use.
I know that. Why is it red?
Red is an addition.
Okay, what was it before?
There was no row before. That's what we decided to classify this as.
Heavy service commercial light industry has got a red P in it, under item two.
Oh, this one here, for the sale of new or used automobiles.
Yeah, yeah, okay. What, what is it now, before it's changed?
Uh, now, it, there was no, there was nothing in there. It wasn't allowed in light industrial.
Is it a C? Is it conditional?
No. There was nothing. It wasn't allowed.
Wasn't allowed.
Wasn't allowed.
Okay. So if we're going to allow that, shouldn't we need a public hearing for that?
It's a permitted use, it's in the industrial zone. And that's for the sale, that's for automobile sales lots.
Now, in service commercial, the black P means it's, it's permitted use now.
That's right.
So that means right now, so you understand, if we go to service commercial, there could be a free-huff truck dealer there and it would be okay. That's already permitted.
I'm, I'm just addressing the changes in red.
That's already there.
The changes, you're saying that we're already allowing the storage of RVs in the SC?
No.
Okay?
That's new.
That's new.
So which of this is new and which of this is old?
Everything in red is new.
No, no, on this page here.
On the map?
Oh, the, the map zones haven't changed, it's just this table. It's just the red piece.
SC allows so forth and so on.
Right.
Motorcycles, is that, is that new? Or is that the way it is right now?
SC is a permitted use for the sale of RVs, ATVs, all that kind of stuff. Sale is permitted in SC.
Currently.
Correct.
Okay. So right now, all of these items in that SC are, are currently permitted. Correct?
You take each row independently.
I am.
Okay.
But we also added ATVs and.
So you added heavy, heavy service commercial that you had no rating and wasn't allowed before.
Correct.
Correct.
That's what's taking place.
For the sale. Number two deals with only the sale.
Right. Row number two. But row number 11 was a totally new inserted row.
Correct.
That deals with storage and rental.
All right.
And we determined, staff determined that we would allow it as a permitted use. Now, this, this commission has the ability to say, as Mike is suggesting, that perhaps a permitted use isn't the right classification for this, that perhaps a conditional use with a full public hearing is a better approach. And that's appreciated.
At a minimum.
Well, the only other one left is denial, so conditional use means there will be a public hearing. Not everybody can afford to be able to store their stuff, I promise.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You only can do it if you come up here and talk and he's through, okay?
Hi, my name's Angela Klut. I live at 320 Morning Sun Drive. My question is, what is your definition of junk and/or damaged goods? Maybe that's something that could be included in the work session, I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit? And also, if you did determine that somebody was storing junk or damaged goods in their lot, how is it enforced to deal with that issue?
Yeah. We, we do have a full section on junk vehicles. And it is enforced by our code enforcement official. When we receive a complaint or become aware that there is a junk vehicle issue or rubbish issue on a property, then he investigates that and works with the property owners to remedy that situation.
It says junk goods of any kind, which is a lot stronger and covers far more things than just saying junk vehicles. So that thing is, is even stronger than what you were asking.
I guess, I just, I'm wondering, because RVs depreciate pretty quickly. And I think like what might look like junk to me, the owner might not feel that way, but, you know, you drive by Leggitts and think it looks like a disaster, but are those junk vehicles? Are those damaged vehicles? Are they just used vehicles? Is it just not organized very well? I think it's kind of a complicated question and maybe one that deserves.
Beauty is in the eyes of the beholder.
Yeah, very true.
Okay. Name, rank, serial number.
My name's Greg Kovak and I live on Sun Valley Drive, 1060 Sun Valley Drive. And I guess I have a question about this ordinance. Is the ordinance being changed because there's already somebody who's interested in putting a lot down there and you guys are changing the code in order to make that or allow that to occur?
So, Mr. Chairman, we have had inquiries related to RV storage facilities for some time. Now, having said that, and we get inquiries from, like I said before, members of the public, residents, landowners, businesses, commercial developments. Having said that, there is an application that has just been submitted. It is an application that will become.
That this commission does not know about.
This application will come before this planning commission and so we can have a very limited discussion. It is an application for mini warehouse storage. And the change to the 300 square foot limitation is related to this application and emanates from this application. And it would allow them to store RVs in an enclosed space, in a space bigger than 300 square feet.
So, so I have a general question. I've lived up here, up the past 20 plus, and I've lived in Woodland Park for 16. And I wonder what this does for the community? What, what service, what attributes are you bringing to the town of Woodland Park? I mean, I've seen restaurants come and go, we can't keep an ice cream joint open. What is the intent here from an enrichment to this town? I, I just see businesses closing and closing and, you know, I'm sorry, we are a drive-through town and we've been that way a long, long time. And it just doesn't feel like the efforts that we're trying to put forth here is, is an attempt to grow our town and, and to maintain mills, all the reasons why we live here. You know, RV storage, is, that is what's going to stimulate our town and bring people up to our town? Heck no. They're going to ride by like, oh man, those people got screwed. So help me understand, what is the vision for our town? Is this part of it?
Let me answer a little bit of that. We have been driving by up here for 23 years in looking at two drained-out sewage ponds. That's what the Saddle Club Upper and Lower Lagoons look like, sewage ponds. Okay? So it's a stretch to say this is worse. Okay? It really is. And I've been volunteering in this city for about 17 years, trying to make it better. Okay? So anybody, any one of you people that want to come in and open up any one of these things should be entitled to do that, as long as there's a public hearing and it fits into the, the scope of everything, whether it's you, or whether it's me, or anybody here wants to open up any of these different facilities, we should have the right to do that. And if it's, if it's a conditional use, then we're going to have to come, and when we get an applicant, we don't have an applicant yet, because this process has to go over if we get it to conditional, you have to come in and those questions have to be answered. I think that people should have a right to open up their own business and do what they want to do and it surely will look better. Does it need to be done right, correctly? And in case, to Mike, there are several facilities down the springs where people have got a 47-foot coach that costs them 300 to $700,000 that want to put it inside and have their car in there and have a garage in there and have, have a restroom in there and keep it heated. Now, that type of facility, as long as it's built according to our design standards and it looks good, it's not just some kind of a metal fab building out there, I have no problem with that.
That's not what it says.
I'm just making a point to you.
I understand, but that's not what the code, that's not how the code is written.
I think you have to come up here. Sorry, Mike, Mike, you have to come up here if you want to speak.
Yeah, we got to get it on record in case we want.
Call you up later, I don't know. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I, I understand, I already admitted, I understand about protecting my camper and boat. But if, if this was written to where it excluded a RV storage to be totally enclosed RV storage, that'd be a totally different thing. Maybe even partially enclosed, where, as in that picture, there are a three-quarter roof, right? And one side is open and that's not the side facing the highway, you know? But that's not the way it's written. Okay? So if you permit it the way it's written, there's, you know, you put an eight-foot fence up in front of Leggitts and that's essentially what they can do.
Remember I said earlier that we probably need to have a, a work session and I said, and Sally would like everybody to get their input. And you're more than welcome to come up and give your ideas, knowing the fact this is not probably going to get passed of any sort tonight and be continued.
Yeah, my name's Carol Trader, I live at 425 Pembroke Lane. And my question is, on the map, those two little red squares off by the golf course? Where at by the golf course? Because otherwise it's going in my backyard.
Pull up my map.
Mr. Trader, they're not close to your backyard.
That's why I'm asking.
So let me, let me give you some references. The most southerly one is on Research Drive. Research Drive, this is where O'Keefe Ceramics is. And then the middle block, the largest block there, is actually where the fitness center is on Tamarack Parkway.
Past the post office.
Past the post office.
So it's hidden by all the trees?
Yes. And then, wow, Lord. The, the most northern, northerly red block is actually the driving range at the golf course.
And that is my backyard?
Pembroke?
I live right across the street.
Is that, is that?
I, I look at the driving range and.
I'm sorry.
Golf balls out of my backyard all the time.
I thought you said.
That's where you get those.
I was thinking Tarmigan.
There's no way in hell.
Okay.
So the driving range can be a big storage area?
It's currently zoned.
That's what it's zoned right now. It's zoned for heavy service commercial light industrial.
So what can we do as a neighborhood to get that changed? We really don't want it there. I, I may be the only one from Tamarack and the rest of them for Sun Valley, because I came to support them and.
That, that really should have been changed in its zoning when the golf course bought the property and the golf course is a PUD. The, the owner of the golf course should change the zoning.
So I can go down to the golf course and bring that to his attention?
You can.
Okay. Can I keep this?
But the owner lives in California.
Yeah, well, there's a manager there.
Yes.
I can bring it up to them.
You can talk to Jeff about it.
And you could petition for that.
Yeah.
Understand that the CSCS School, Colorado Springs Christian, is in a industrial, heavy commercial area.
Yeah, that's, that's all surrounded by trees back by the police department.
Yeah, but they're also in that area.
Yeah. But they're not a big commercial storage area.
I hear you. I hear you. But you have to take some initiative, because the guy does own that and he's got rights to, that's all we're talking.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
You've had your hand up in the bag, you got to come up here.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Stinner. I live at 1140 Michael Lane in the Northwoods neighborhood. This is an SR zone neighborhood, it's been established since the 1980s. The reason I'm coming forward tonight is because we actually are an SR zone, single-family subdivision. And I'm not sure whether the, Sally, what are they called, ZDPs that you passed, is that right?
Zoning development permits?
Yes, that you granted. Do you want to tell them about those that you granted in my neighborhood?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll tell them then. I don't like to public speak, so excuse me, I get really nervous. So we bought our property in 2015 and it seemed to be a quiet little half acre. We back up to the beautiful new Stone Ridge Village properties. Those are single-family neighborhoods in Dana Duncan's PUD. And we had a bit of a conflict a year and a half ago. One morning I woke up and we had three of the really big RVs that you drive, I don't know, like 30 footers or something, beautiful RVs, a lot of money parked on that home site. And the RVs were coming and going. And then another parcel adjacent to those, we had two campers, a worn-out camper, some industrial trailers that were open. And then again, on next to that property, we had a guy, a young man, very hard worker, opened up a tree service. And so he parks his two dump trucks and his tree trimmers and his assorted commercial vehicles right across the street from us. So there has been an impact. And we did bring this to light, to the planning department. And my question is, Sally, when you gave those approvals through ZDPs, did you bring that forward to the planning commission? And the reason that's relevant is because if it happens in my SR zone, what, what makes this change in the charter going to prevent that from happening in other single-family residential neighborhoods?
I'm happy to clarify, first of all, there were no zoning development permits issued for these three complaints that.
Excuse me, we were told there were.
Stop, stop. Everybody has turns, let her have a turn. Okay.
We don't issue zoning development permits for parking RVs or trucks on people's property. What we did do was we had an enforcement action and our code enforcement official was able to get the three motor homes taken care of the next day. The other two issues took us a little bit longer, but we were able to get their trailers put behind fences and we believe that we mitigated those issues. So these were not zoning development permits and I'm sorry if you thought that they were.
You told me, I have it in an email, Sally.
Well, we can, we can visit offline.
I would like to visit now with it. I mean, this, this is my concern.
Not the forum for it.
Okay, well, Mr. DeBolt, this is. Okay, well, Mr. DeBolt, this is my concern.
Because I came out there when you, you guys talked about that.
Okay.
And I told Sally to send code enforcement out, because I went out and looked, took a look to that myself.
Yes.
I did do that.
I think the audience needs to come take a look at our neighborhood at 1140 Michael Lane and take a look and see if there's an impact to our neighborhood for the allowing of the motor homes on one lot.
We have to stay on task for this.
Industrial uses on the second lot and also on the third. Thank you.
We have to stay on task for this.
This is on task. This is my concern about changing this. What difference does it make if you bypass what you've got written in your charter by issuing ZDPs? Or citing...
There were no ZDPs.
Pardon me?
There were no ZDPs.
Okay, and the SR zone, this is, neither of these are conditional uses or permitted and yet they're allowed. So I just want to bring this to the attention, to the planning commission, to consider it when you have your special meeting regarding the change to this ordinance.
We will ask Sally that.
Thank you.
Get a report back to us on that. Not tonight.
Thank you.
We're not gonna solve it tonight, okay?
I just wanted to bring it to the floor so you're aware.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks. There's gotta be some more hands out there. Okay, come on, go back.
I live at 1030 Winter Green Court. This particular ordinance probably has very little impact to me personally, because I live in the Paradise Estates subdivision and we already have codes regarding RV parking and whatnot. But I am a citizen of this community and it does concern me. Reading on the first page, under analysis, the first sentence begins, "This amendment addresses a community need." I remember when we were looking at building in Aquatics Center, questionnaires went out, people were polled, and my question is, what documentation have you collected specifically as far as numbers and need?
This is the start of the process.
Well, this is the start. You, you guys developed a change in the ordinance based on "This amendment addresses a community need."
Remember, we just modified an existing ordinance. We added some things to it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Sure.
...to answer this question. So the community need was derived not from studying, but from continuous inquiries we get from citizens of the city and from businesses and from developers. It's not just one question. We all get continuous questions about where can I park my RVs?
And, and that, in my opinion, if I were to create, if I was in charge of creating changes, I would document the number of calls received, what the specific inquiry was. Are they located in Woodland Park? Are they located outside the city limits? I would have documented all that information, not just said, "We receive," where you have no information to back it up other than, "I said so."
This is...
I said so.
This isn't the forum to do that. This is just the start of a process of creation, a creation of a modification of...
No, the start should not be create a modification in response to someone saying, "I've received these phone calls." A modification should happen when we have the documented evidence saying, "This is what we need."
It's not a trial, we don't have to have documentation.
I know, but what I'm saying is, you're putting, it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse in this situation. And as far as RVs go, no offense to all the RV owners out there, but an RV is a luxury and if you're gonna buy an RV and put that much expense into it, I think you would want to know where you're gonna park it in advance of buying it. I've traveled the world in the US Navy. One of the places I've visited was Singapore. In Singapore, you have to pay with the valid vehicle and you have to confirm if you have a place to park it. Now, this isn't Singapore, this is Woodland Park, but if you're gonna invest in an RV, you should know where you're gonna park it. And, and reacting to phone calls, when you don't know who these people are, no any documentation, the same person can be calling a hundred times so they get some action.
Let me tell you a story. I'm gonna give you a story. Okay? When I moved here in 1995, I bought a lot in Crestwood Two, which I sold because I found out I couldn't put a basketball court, bank board on the front of my house, okay? My garage door had to be closed if I wasn't there. I couldn't open it. So you know what I did? I bought elsewhere. I got into a subdivision that the covenant said I could put a small RV next to my property, which I'm allowed to do. And I've had them there, I don't have one now. But what I'm saying is, some of it's buyer beware. If you're gonna move into an area, I don't care whether it's Woodland Park or where it is, or Singapore, you're gonna find out what the covenants are for the subdivision you're in. If it doesn't allow RVs, then you better have, you're gonna buy one, you gotta figure out a place to park it. But we all have that right to do it. And I can still put one in mine, I don't have to, I bought it purposely for that reason.
And we bought where we go.
And that's just what we all do and that's why you bought there.
That's why we didn't buy a majestic park because of all the conditions placed on the option.
Exactly. I sold that and I...
Right, but if you have existing neighborhoods, existing places where right now it's not permitted to do this, and then all of a sudden you change it, you're changing everything around that location, whether you want to put up a screen, whatever, you are changing that location where someone like the woman stepped up here and mentions what happened with her. So you have to take that into consideration. And I really think before you make any changes and present this again, you need to actually get news and information about what the actual demand is.
When somebody comes to the city on an inquiry, so you understand this, when somebody comes in the, to the city and says, "We have an inquiry to buy a piece of land," the city is not required and then cities should, if they say, "We want to keep this private," the city keeps it private, as they should. If we have developers that want to put in a CVS across Walgreens, if we have somebody that comes in and wants to put another store, they have the right, when they do that development, that until they file a formal application, we don't have, it's a case-by-case basis, we don't have to tell anybody. Nor should we.
Why can't you make this a case-by-case basis?
What's that?
Why can't you make the RV storage sale, whatever, a case-by-case basis?
It is, that's why we're here.
Well, it doesn't say anything here that it's a case-by-case basis.
What I'm saying is, that's what we're, that's what this process is.
Well, and that's, I'm giving you my opinion.
And, well, it's...
And my opinion is, this should never have been written without statistics.
Well, and that's your opinion?
Yes, it is. And that's the way any, any change should be, it should be based on statistics and evidence.
Okay, thanks. Now, wait a second, before you get up, the gentleman in blue had his hand up back there. Would you like him up? We're just trying to keep your order going.
My concerns are...
Name, rank, serial number? It's on.
It's on, just hold it up.
My name's John Nossinger and I live at 605 Sun Valley Drive. We moved up here and didn't really understand what that land was for and we live pretty much right across from it, from a park area that's up there, and I'm sure most of you know where that is. But my concern here is, we moved up here because of the beauty and the aesthetics of this community that it has. And I'm with you, you know, people own property, they should try to develop it, but I also think the community has a right to have stuff look a certain way for the community, because it portrays all of us to the rest of the community that drives up here and goes through our community. Plus, all of us who have to live by this stuff. My big concern is here, you have houses over my area that are probably in a range of probably about four hundred thousand on up to over a million dollars. And once you do something like this and you put storage units or tiny homes or whatever in there, it's totally disingenuous to say that doesn't affect people's property values. And I do believe there's some state statutes that address that, but I'm not gonna address that here today. But I just think we need to be aware of that, because I'm hearing this fencing or whatever that's put up, it has to be out of our sight. That could end up being even uglier than what's being put there, depending on, because height-wise, I'm looking, I'm going, how are you gonna shield that from the public's view in my community when we all sit probably fifty feet above that looking down on it? You're not. It's not possible. So, I do agree. I think we have to have a lot more discussion on this matter.
No question.
And not just slide this through, because I'm telling you, for the small houses, we had petitions to probably...
It's got nothing to do with small houses, there's no small houses.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I just want to get this one point out. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of almost three hundred signatures on these that we didn't turn in because it was backed away. And it's just not us in this community that are concerned about this. It's just not this neighborhood. It was people from all over this town that were really concerned about it. I don't think that's gonna go away. And I think we need to have further meetings on this. And I think the community needs to have a lot of input before this takes place. That's all I have to say.
When you say "this," do you mean this that we're talking about now?
Yes, sir.
Or you're talking about the tiny homes?
The tiny homes, as far as I know, have been dropped. I'm not concerned about that. I'm talking about this change now to your zoning code and stuff. I'm talking about this change. I think we need to have a lot of public input on here, because the tiny homes is a big issue. I guarantee you, we can go out and get the same amount of signatures or more on a petition because this community's gonna be concerned about this. It's the aesthetic look to this community. What do we want that to be? I think that's a valid issue and it's a valid issue for this entire community. So, I think we need to have much more input and I would like to see some planning sessions where people in this community can address all of you about the issues we all have with. I'm glad you're going that way and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
One of the things that happens, that's happened up here, and I've been here since ninety-six, okay? Bought a house in ninety-five. That's a commercial corridor is twenty-four. That's a commercial corridor and most everything in that commercial corridor, all the way down to Western Convenience, is zoned in some form of commercial. Okay? And I know where you live and I understand all those beautiful homes that are back in there, but eventually, nobody's gonna build residential on Highway twenty-four. So that land there is owned by somebody and they have the right, just as you have the right to, to talk about it, it'll mean like this, they have the right to build something on their land because it was zoned commercial when they started. Now, this is a change. That's why we have the C that's called conditional and that's why we do this.
No, I, I understand what you're doing. I'm not questioning that.
But it's still constitutional democracy.
What I'm saying is, I think this community is concerned about how that stuff is developed and what is put there. No one's saying that nothing should be put there or developed.
No, I understand.
Okay? It's the aesthetics of it and how that impacts the community around it. No one's saying that something shouldn't be done.
Nobody disagrees with you.
Okay? So, definitely, someone can do that. I'm just not sure that this is the best thing, but I'm glad to hear that we're gonna have some further discussions on it and have more community input. Thank you.
There is a, in the purple blouse.
My name is Cynthia Kovak. I live at 1060 Sun Valley Drive. This has been very educational for me and forgive my ignorance to some of the finer points. The one part of this presentation that somewhat concerns me is removing the boundaries and the size of the storage unit. I understand, because you're going for RVs, that they would have to be larger in scale. But again, considering the aesthetics of our neighborhood and our community, I think it would be prudent for the planning council to consider how to define boundaries in consideration of the parcel of land that this would be developed on, so it's not some large behemoth structure that would dwarf the surrounding area. And I would just respectfully ask that you take that in order of advisement. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a...
You are next.
Just a comment.
You. I'm sorry.
I was hoping I could make just a comment to Cynthia's size concerns. The service commercial zone is really designed for a big box type development, so it's likely that you'll get a behemoth-type sized building in a service commercial zone, anyway.
You're up.
My name is Jay Moore. I live at 225 Morning Sun Drive in Woodland Park. My question to you, Lori, is that you mentioned that there was an application that was just presented, that the, I guess the commission here doesn't know about. Is there any way that we could know who that permit or application was from?
Mr. Chairman, that will be set forward publicly during this planning commission. There will be a public notification once staff actually process the application. We haven't even been informed yet. So that will come out. Jay, and this is allowed to be disclosed publicly, or posted in the news paper, where this opportunity comes here from that place. And I'd like to report to the planning commission and also that I'd like to come and look at the file. You may have this, I'd like to...
Thank you.
What's the red P?
The red P, that means that it's still proposed. At this point, there is no zoning in what they're proposing yet. So they have to come back to this group here. We have to have a public hearing. There'll be another one at city council. Okay? So you get two times to go back after it, if you want to do that. I mean, to present your argument, I mean, this, all we're doing is recommending, okay? And this council has to make the ultimate decision on this. But I think we need to just table this until we can have a work session and get some more information, because there's no, we represent you. We're living in that same community as you folks are. And I, and I, and I agree with a bunch, a bunch of your comments and I, and so we will do our best to serve you, to do this, okay? And we'll come back here again.
From a staff perspective, I just really want you all to know that we appreciate your input very, very much. And Greg raised a very good question about whether, is this really what we want in Woodland Park? And that's why we bring it forward through your planning commission first and then the city council, and those folks get to make that decision, based on your input, based on staff's input. And it was mentioned that we don't have junkyard allowances in our community. That is a deliberate decision, because we don't believe that is an appropriate use. It may be that through this process, that RV storage is not an appropriate use for Woodland Park. And as far as statistics, we have, I have personally had at least three different property owners approach the staff to include storage units of RVs in the last five years. So it's not a lot, but it is a gap that has come forward. So we do our best to try to weigh the needs of the inquiries as well as what our community needs to be when it develops, because every parcel of land within this community will be developed one day. And it is through the zoning regulations and our process for review and the input that you all provide that will get us the very best development we can have. So we really appreciate your input this evening. We will continue this discussion and I'm sure we probably will see you in a couple of weeks as well.
Before you, you had your hand up. Did you have a question or do we answer?
May I ask real fast?
You gotta come up here. There's another one.
Sorry about that, I hate speaking public. My name is Linda Martin. This is Riley...
Mrs. Riley knows me. I do have a question in regards to the Ps on this chart. So that would be permitted use. You mentioned that site plan reviews are done by your staff. Do those site plan reviews also consist of traffic studies, environmental studies, things like that?
We have design standards and all that up here. More than we have in the Springs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And Linda, they do include all of that. They would include a traffic impact assessment, and they would include landscaping plans, and they would include a site plan review, and they'd even include a notification to adjacent property owners where the file is open, and we anticipate comments.
Okay.
And it includes the drainage study, as well as lighting standards.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, all the utilities, both the water and sewer, and the dry utilities. All of that gets reviewed very, very closely.
That's public record information that you...
It is public, public record.
And certainly, not just for what is proposed on the property, but also what is proposed on adjoining properties or nearby properties. The traffic study would include...
Any applications. Any application that's required to go through a site plan review process would be subject to all of those same standards. Terms of the submittal documents and the evidence that they have to provide for compatibility.
Okay. And then on the map, you showed where the SC and the HSC LI were located on your map?
Uh-huh.
Where are the undeveloped PUDs? If I'm reading that correctly?
The undeveloped PUDs? So this map actually does not show PUDs.
PUDs are not undeveloped. If they have gone through the proposed process, then they have a final development plan, and they are restricted to follow that plan unless the plan is amended by the planning commission. So the PUDs that are in the city, all, the golf course, Stone Ridge, the Sturman's property, Walmart, Safeway, all have development plans associated with them. They may not be fully developed out because they are phased over time. They're typically large pieces of land. But the PUDs are not undeveloped.
That also is public record. You can come up and look at it.
That's right, Linda. You can come into the office anytime, and we have our zoning map online as well, so you can see where those are.
Okay. And my last question in regard to this chart again. Under CC, community commercial, I guess that is? We are changing it a bit to allow for, am I understanding it correctly? Trailers, which we will be defining, intercompeting.
I'm going to CC.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a change in CC?
There's no change in CC.
No.
My name is Judy Malich. I live at 300 Morning Sun Drive. I've lived here for almost 16 years. What I seem to be hearing tonight about this proposed thing, Sally says she's had three calls about having RV storage, that those of us who don't want to see the city developed to a bunch of RV storages and large storage units ought to be calling or sending letters to you at your office and letting you know that we're against it. Because you're getting influenced by three phone calls, or five or six phone calls, and you don't even know from whom they come. So I think maybe we need to inundate your offices with lots of mail and talk and calls that we don't want this crap in the town. We want to see our town as a nice commercially acceptable, we want to see the commercial areas developed into things that are nice, that we can, in places we can enjoy. There is one restaurant where you can go in and sit down and have a nice meal in this whole town, and all we see is more and more, you know, drive-through restaurants. Why not have some nice walk-in restaurants where we can go and eat, instead of having to go down to the Springs all the time? You're losing money. You're losing tax revenue by having places that are not bringing in money. And I know there's been a lot of restaurants that have closed and stuff in the 16 years I've been here. But is, do we really want to have this town be something that is, our image be, that we provide storage units for RVs? That we provide storage units that are big and ugly-looking? And I don't care how well you have a fence. I agree. Some fences could look a lot worse than what they're covering. And I just, basically, I just wanted to say, I guess we just need to inundate your office with lots of comments of what we don't want, so that we get a little say in this before it becomes, before city spends a lot of time coming up with the new regulations. This commission spends a lot of time going over these regulations.
But we want to do that. We want to do that. That's our, that's your right to come here. We want you all to come here and talk about it.
But this stuff should be, you should know how the public in this town feels long before it gets to this point.
Most people would rather say I'm the last one who came in and shut the door.
The only way that's going to happen is if we inundate City Hall. Okay. And we will do that. And we will get the word out, and we'll pass card yet.
Thank you. And I have a statement with Mike. There is no way you can build a wall high enough to cover that up. It had to be the size of a penitentiary. The secret is, you got to make what's there look good.
Get Trump.
You have to make whatever you make there, you got to, yeah. Get Trump up here. I want some of that money. But what I'm saying is, whatever you put there's got to look good. It's got to be aesthetically acceptable to our area. But we have design standards for that, to Kyle Rush Springs, never even had. We're trying on to do that. Do we give you all a chance to answer your questions? You've been up here.
I just want to ask a brief question. So all of us...
You got to do that. It's just, she could get mad at me if I don't do that.
Okay, all of us here spoken on the next, all of us have spoken, come up and spoken about some of the negatives. Can Sally contact these three individuals that she's aware of that have been interested in developing, so that they can come to the next meeting and talk about why this is a positive, and what their vision is? So we have something to discuss the codes, what the commission, or the planning commission is providing?
We don't owe them that since they didn't come here with a formal plan. We owe it to you because you're here.
Well, I guess the feedback I'm getting is, we're doing this because we received these solicitations, but the only ones that are here are the people against it. See what I'm saying? So where are the people that are for it?
Pardon? Well, it hasn't, it hasn't developed yet. Last two, okay?
My name is Greg David. I won't bore you with how many years I've lived here because it hasn't been that long. But I've learned a lot about zoning in the last three weeks. I'll just put it to you that way. One thing that I will say is that your comment about, or your proposal to put screening around fences at U-Haul facilities, that's fine, but you need to realize that U-Haul facilities receive U-Hauls on off-hours, and they will park them in front of the fence, and your screen will look nice, but the U-Hauls still on the one ground. Okay? The other thing is, there's been several comments tonight about Leggits and how bad it looks. And just like you said, there's no way you can cover that up. If you drive by it, you'll notice that half of them are up on the hill, so you're not going to cover it up.
Exactly.
So you have to, you know, consider topography as you do this. The other thing I would encourage you to do is, you're, the reason I'm saying these things is because I'm not going to be able to attend, may not be able to attend the work session, but I would think that you would want these three people that have contacted Sally, and maybe this new developer, at least invite them to come and talk and hear the public's comments and y'all's comments as to what the problems are, instead of just saying, "Oh, I'm going to stick it out there by where the golf course is."
We're recording this. They can certainly listen to what took place here tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Oleg Belishov. I live on 610 Sun Valley Drive. Couple of comments before I have a request. You mentioned, Mrs. Planner, that the, or the person inquiring for some of these changes, we can't bring that information at this meeting at this moment because it hasn't been divulged, or you guys haven't gone through it just yet. But I would advise this commission to know who this person is, because it is really relevant to what you guys are going to be talking about in the back door, back there. Personally, I thought it was, it was Mr. Labar. I mean, I'll call out the elephant in the room. Is it Mr. Labar that's bringing out these requests?
Hasn't even been inputted yet. And once it's inputted, it will be public information.
Okay. And that's my second, my second concern, is public information. The last, the last public hearing, I was the one that was affected. I, my property is adjacent to that, to that 13-acre lot. I was the only one, frankly, that got the letter. Or maybe there was one other property owner because of that 150-foot rule. I would strongly suggest the commission to revise that, maybe to extend that to about half a mile, if not more. Because there's a lot of people that are...
Somehow you got the word out. You had plenty of people there.
We did. But we had to, we had to, you know, we had to put our legs in. And frankly, this 150 feet, whatever, even in those, even in that daily use permit, that 150 feet, well, there's more people that are going to be affected than just the adjacent property owners. And that's just something to consider.
May I respond to Oleg? That's a very good point, and as planners, we hear that very often. Just know that the adjacent property owner letters are just one form of the notification process that we go through. We also post the agenda for public hearings in the newspaper, in the Courier. So there's that. And we also post the site, so people driving by would see as well. So there's a three-pronged approach to that.
May I respond? So with all due respect, there's not too many people that read the newspaper.
Oh, don't tell her that. Come on, don't tell her that. She's a good lady.
On that note, on that note, I will say, I have an active subscription to the Wall Street Journal, so I do read the Wall Street Journal. But...
We can't afford to advertise in that. I'm sorry. This is a work.
And the public notices, the public, I remember there was that public notice that was, that was set up, right at the corner on 24. That public notice, for some reason, got blown away. So you may put something up there, but we were driving by there two days later, that public notice was gone. So it was a little sketchy for us.
And if that happens again, you call them and let the notes down?
Right.
And it'll be put back up?
Call us. And it has been put up a few times.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Now, before we move on, do I, do I, do I hear anybody wanting to make a motion to put this on hold until this work session, at a time not specific at this point, because we got to figure out how all this happens? And just basically table it? I don't know if we have to have a date in Robert's rules. Will we table?
I think we want to table to a date, sir.
Table, we want to table?
At least table to a work session.
We'll table this to a work session, to be determined, to be put in the paper, and put on the city's website. And anybody who wants to call in, call in. And we'll tell you when that's... Not attend the work session. And please, sure, you come back to a work session. And if we have enough people and we can't move it here, we'll move it to the Culture Center or someplace like that. Somebody's going to make it a potluck, going to see who's going to... Are you talking about the public attending the work session? Well, it'll be a public work session. A public work session? Oh, shit, well, all work sessions are public. No, not the ones we have here. But anyhow, do I, do I hear anybody who wants to make a motion to put this to a table?
Make a motion? We table the discussion of this ordinance and move it to a work session with a date to be determined and announced on all the public...
Go have a second. Okay? Call a question.
Please do, Mr. Trump. I've got to find my... All right. Starting with Eleanor.
Yes.
Ken Pressman.
Yes.
Nick Good.
Yes.
Jared Penlon.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Trader.
Yes.
John DeBro.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Do we have anything else? If not, if this was a Thursday night, we'd have been gone early for the football game on Thursday nights. Okay, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
What about reports? Sally have reports?
No reports? Any reports from you guys? A date for the next session? Yes. To be determined. We don't have a next session scheduled?
We have one in two weeks.
Two weeks?
And not this. All that? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Thank you all for coming, okay? Thank you.
Did he turn them off or something?
Yes, ma'am.